I'd like to bring the city commission meeting to order. Please join me in a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll open the meeting with public input. If you'd care to speak before us, come forward and give us your name and address.
Sorry?
Wait, do you have camera close that or?
Oh, sure.
I didn't want to mess anything up.
No problem. We can get it back.
All right. Keep those up high. Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Cheryl Brooks. I live at 1533 Hampton Road. I'm here tonight because we've came before this body several times to discuss and deliver facts and documentation regarding the Silverback Landing subdivision. I just want to make it clear that in no way are we against this project. I want you to know that. It's striving to make sure all is done legally and properly according to the ordinances, regulations, and agreements that were created by you, the commission. Reviewing the agenda and video of the March 19th, 2019 city commission meeting, it's time to set the record straight regarding the approval of the revolving loan fund and retail street sales tax for the developer of Silverback Landing. The March 19th agenda item states, and I quote, "Silverback Landing Road, consider the recommendation of the EDAC to provide $60,000 from the revolving loan fund, which, when combined with a similar amount from the street sales tax, will enable the city to construct roads in Silverback Landing." The commission did indeed vote for $60,000 from the street sales tax that is only for maintenance and repair of city roads. Money from the street tax of $60,000 was included as part of this motion. Mr. McGinnity was only half correct that it was only the revolving loan funds that were voted on on the March 19th meeting. He stated at the last meeting on the question from myself and Commissioner Nerd Chinwick that only the revolving loan fund was voted on. Mr. McGinnity said, and I quote, "We're just pointing out that on the agenda tonight, the only item is the $60,000 from the EDAC." As stated a moment ago, the agenda and subsequent motion clearly includes $60,000 from the street sales tax. These are not city streets. They have not been dedicated by the developer to the city yet, period. Why are you, the city officials, trying to change how things are legally done? Why are the commissioners being complacent in their job to make sure city laws and regulations are being followed? In no way is the city to construct roads in Silverback Landing according to the Real Housing Incentive District Agreement. I repeat, it is improper for the city to construct roads in Silverback Landing. No city dollars are to be used for the infrastructure development of Silverback Landing. The video at the 27-minute mark of the March 19th city commission meeting, Commissioner Mazzell and City Manager Darren Hall had a discussion about the streets with Mr. Hall stating, and I quote, "I don't know what the developer had planned. The roads were presented as asphalt. The question from Matt's group was to upgrade them to concrete. If he would put in concrete, he would. He was not required to put in concrete streets, but he was required to put in asphalt. Although he'd be reimbursed, he would be spending an extra $120,000 to do it." When asked if the original plan was asphalt, City Manager Hall stated that, quote, "It is my understanding." When asked by Commissioner McNay as to the original plan presented, was asphalt the commissioners voted on, the City Manager Hall stated, and I quote, "Yes." And when asked about the ordinance, Hall states that the ordinance is to maintain city streets. Very clear in ordinance that it is to take care of city streets. Cameron Alden, Public Works Director, explained in the meeting that, quote, "Subdivision specs allow for asphalt as well as concrete streets, and there is initial upfront cost. It is a little bit more expensive for concrete versus the asphalt, but we do get a much longer life out of it and is a more durable pavement." The documents given to each of you at the last commission meeting, Exhibit D stated that concrete was planned and there were cross-street section plans showing concrete was designated as the material to be used in the development. Why is nobody listening? Why is nobody paying attention? Why is no one doing anything to correct the erroneous statements made about the Silverback Landing process over the last year? This is all about doing things correctly and transparently. The citizens need to pay attention and investigate for themselves what is happening in our city. We value the time to come with our questions, and we will continue to come and seek answers about our concerns regarding Silverback Landing. If anyone wants to examine the facts, go to the City of Pittsburgh's website and look at the agendas and minutes under the City Commission section, or go to YouTube and search for the City of Pittsburgh Commission Meeting of March 19th, 2019, to see the facts that are spoken here by me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public input?
Hi there. My name is Jasmine Kyle, 219 and 1/2 North Broadway. I am the Business and Promotions Manager of the Southeast Kansas Humane Society. The pet keeping culture in this country has changed dramatically over the past decade. From the rise of pet health insurance to dog hotels, Americans are investing a tremendous amount of time, money, energy, and love in their four-legged companions. Nearly two-thirds of American households have pets. That's 77 million pet dogs. Nearly two-thirds of this, what's more, that they consider them to be family members. And the amount spent annually on pets was nearly $61 billion in 2015. All of this illustrates that the majority of Americans love and care for these animals. That said, there are still issues causing animals to lose their homes, six to eight million of whom end up in our nation's animal shelters every year. For dogs, perhaps the most troublesome is breed-specific legislation. A BSL restricts dog ownership by breed, creating obstacles and hardships for many dogs and dog owners. Thankfully, no state still regulates dogs based on breed, but an extensive patchwork of cities, counties, municipalities, including the City of Pittsburgh, have bans and restrictions. Ours, of course, is currently pit bulls. In recent years, many municipalities and cities, including Bonner Springs, Frontenac, Garden City, Shawnee, and Topeka, have repealed their breed-based laws and adopted a breed-neutral approach to animal management: mandatory microchipping, spaying and neutering, having vets on record limit dogs per household, and of course, being licensed with the city, and many more options. The number of Americans who self-identify as pit bull owners has also increased. Bainfield Pet Hospitals, the largest chain of veterinary clinics in the country, reports that the number of these clients has risen over 47%. The reality, and when you think of pit bulls, I know that many seem to get frightened. They think of dog fighting. Just this Monday was Dog Fighting Awareness Day. The reality is that reported dog bites have significantly decreased since 1970. 1970, over 40,000 bites recorded. In 2011, 850, a significant drop, and that was just in 2011. The Journal of the American Veterinary Medical Association has identified multiple co-occurring factors in all these bite cases, but yet breed was not one of them. They even state that singling out one or two breeds for control can result in a false sense of accomplishment. Doing so ignores the true scope of the problem and will not result in a responsible approach to protecting a community's citizens. A BSL has unfortunately a backlash effect because it drives owners of these dogs farther away from the public and services they need to socialize and keep them healthy, like going to vet clinics, vaccinations, spaying and neutering, trainings for these animals. It creates shame and hardship for dog owners, casts stereotypes and negative perceptions, and overall is bad for the neighborhood and community relations. Breed bans and restrictions not only force dogs out of homes but into shelters, taking up kennel space and resources needed by animals who are truly homeless. Underfunded animal control agencies bear the burden of enforcing these laws and are often called on to decide, based on looks alone, not genetic testing, whether a dog belongs to a certain breed. Battles erupt between dog owners, local agencies. Some of these go to courts, costing the community resources that could go into fundamental projects. Today, I come in front of the commissioners and everybody here, and all that I ask is that if you guys could please, to see if we could get the BSL on the next meeting's agenda. I would love to sit down with each and every one of you, give you the research, give you the information on us working toward a neutral breed legislation. That's all we are asking at this point. Thank you so much for your time tonight, commissioners.
Thank you for coming before.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jasmine?
Yes.
Are you here just out of curiosity as yourself, or are you representing the Humane Society?
Both. So I am here as the SCK. I'm part of the SCK Humane Society, but also we have had a number of the community outreach towards us for many, many, many years. I know this isn't the first time we've come up to the city, but I am here as not only a community member, but also in the heart of our organization, as we do take, and just on another point, you guys, we have the best group with animal control. It has been the best we have had in years. Your guys' euthanasia rates are incredibly low because we were able to work with Jason and his team hand-in-hand. We have been able to save so many animals because of that team. Right now, one of our pit bulls we actually got from you guys. Her name is Nova. She's two years. We've had her for two years, unfortunately, now. So I'm here on behalf of both parts.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public input?
Hi. I'm Michelle Sellers. This is my husband, Dyke Sellers, and we own and operate BKC Fireworks.
Your address, please.
302 North Lobetten, Frontenac. I apologize.
Frontenac, okay.
Prior to the fireworks season in 2018, we approached the Pittsburgh City Commission about lowering the recently increased firework license permit fee. As you may recall, it was changed in 2018 from $250 to $5,000. The 2018 season was an average season with the Fourth of July falling on a Wednesday. Our Pittsburgh location at Ron's IGA near the Meadowburg Mall opened June 27th and closed on July 4th for a total of eight business days. That is $625 per day of business. No other business license fees are anywhere near that amount, and if they were, there would be no businesses located in the city. As I stated at the February 27th, 2018 commission meeting, this fee is beyond reasonable to us. We are a mom-and-pop business. We purchase our fireworks from Jake's as well as other importers. We do not sell on consignment or on percentage from another parent company as most firework locations do. We lease the lot, pay for and provide the required insurances, rent the tent, and purchase every firework in the tent. In 2018, we sold $15,222.41 in Pittsburgh and paid $1,372.02 in sales tax. Our total profit from the Pittsburgh location was $987.68. It is difficult to understand why the city should profit significantly more than our business did. In 2018, when we asked to have the fee reduced, we were asked to try it for a year and that competing tenants may not pay the fee and do business in the city. Is the day of mom-and-pop business over due to the pressure of big business and government? I would like to not, sorry, I would like to think not with the push last year to shop local. The City of Pittsburgh has always been eager to work with local businesses, and we would like to see that continue. The firework business is closely tied to the weather. Too dry in any area results in burn bans, which reduces business. Rain results in a reduction of business. Last season, there were no rain days in the eight days we were open for business. A single rain day during the business days of July would have resulted in us being upside down in the 2018 season. We ask that you take another look at last year's decision and reconsider it to a more reasonable license permit fee for fireworks locations so that we can continue business in the City of Pittsburgh. I had called numerous cities and had made a spreadsheet on their fees. I concentrated mainly with the cities that had a population between 10,000 and 40,000, with Pittsburgh being somewhere in the middle of that. And of those cities, Pittsburgh is the third highest now as far as their license fee. The top two are Derby at 8,000 and Over at 7,500, which are all suburbs of Wichita, and Wichita has over 300,000 people that they're drawing their business from. Again, Pittsburgh is the third highest. Again, we just ask you to reconsider, and if you have any questions of us, we would be glad to answer them.
Yeah, I have. When do you have to pay this fee? Is it something that you're paying now for the season, or is there a date that?
As far as the license fee?
Yes.
We have to pay it, I think, 15 days before we actually open for business, is my understanding.
So, has anybody paid to the city already that $5,000 license fee?
This year?
Yeah.
I doubt it.
To my knowledge, I don't believe no one's paid yet. Last year, in 2018, we had five businesses pay the $5,000 licensing fee.
I'd like to see this.
Let's do this on non-agenda items. I don't think we want to get in the habit of doing actions during public. That's my opinion, public input.
And I concur. I think that this isn't really the time for question and answers. This is the time to receive their input, and then we can address it.
When will we talk about?
You can do it under non-agenda.
Under non-agenda.
Sure. Well, it sounds like that sounds like the plan, doesn't it?
Thank you for your time.
You're sticking around for that one.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else for public input?
Seeing none, opposed public input. Item C, Kansas Department of Transportation Representative Dave Cork will present the Pittsburgh Police Department with the AAA Safe Driving Award. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor Brian. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the commission. I stand before you today to present Pittsburgh Police Department with their eighth AAA award. This is their seventh consecutive platinum award. No other police department or sheriff department in the state of Kansas has ever achieved that, and it's from the hard work of the men and women of the police department. Can I tell you a few things that they do that makes your community safe? First of all, the police department, they work with the multi-department Traffic Safety Committee here. That's where it brings in the public, law enforcement, city engineers for a common goal to make your streets safe. They also set up child passenger safety fitting stations to help parents to make sure that their children are properly restrained and buckled up. Today, the children in Pittsburgh are a lot safer from these fitting stations. They also recognize for what they do with a special traffic enforcement program that KDOT provides for them, and that is where they work with speed, seat belts, stop sign violations, impaired drivers, removing the impaired drivers off the road. They also work with a city engineer with their safe routes to school to get more crosswalks so that the children are safer. The pedestrians today are safer in Pittsburgh because of the work with the city engineer. They also support the SAFE program. SAFE, the seat belts are for everyone. It's a program that started right here in Crawford County 10 years ago. One county, six high schools. Today, it's in 70 counties and 180 high schools. We have taken that program and cut our teen fatalities almost in half. Again, they work with Pittsburgh High School and St. Mary's Colgan to make sure that SAFE is a successful program in the city. Just to show you what they've done with that, some of the data. Your child passenger safety seatbelt rate is at 90-plus percent. That means almost every child that's traveling is properly restrained or in a restraint. Your teen crashes, and our latest data is 2017, fell from 50 in 2014 to 4 in 2017. Your vehicle crash injuries fell from 70 in 2014 to 10 in 2017. And crash fatalities fell from five in 2016, five fatalities within the city or surrounding area, to zero last year. That's due to the efforts of the men and women of the Pittsburgh Police Department, and I can personally tell you, I've worked with them for 25 years, various things, and I always thought they were one of the best agencies in the state. So with that, I'd like to present Chief Nargis and the men and women of the Pittsburgh Police Department with their eighth AAA award.
Just want to thank Dave, KDOT, and AAA for recognizing, acknowledging our traffic safety educational and enforcement efforts with the members. This time, I want to recognize two of our patrol officers from our agency, Officer Brett Dawn and Officer Ted Cook. Without their concerted efforts and the efforts of our entire patrol division, this award certainly would not be possible. So just want to say thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all for all the great work that you do for us. We appreciate your considerations. Moving on to the consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone must have thought of? Item D. Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
That's what you think.
D, D is a dog.
A second.
Roll call vote.
Chinwick?
Aye.
McNally?
Aye.
McNay?
Aye.
Mazzell?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Item D, approval of the police department staff request to waive the city bid policy for capital purchases in order to purchase one 2019 Dodge Ram Quad cab half-ton pickup truck for a total purchase price of $22,668.52, utilizing the state of Kansas Vehicle Purchasing Contract as a governmental subunit.
They're retrieving Chief Nargis right now. For a picture, so.
Somebody else may be able to answer this. My only question is, were we placing a 2011 vehicle? Is that going someplace? Are we selling it, or is it just going to be absorbed into our stock?
All of Matt's got it. I don't know for sure what's exactly happening with that vehicle, but typically we're doing, so we do, we work with Chief Nargis and Tim with cycling vehicles. It just depends on, sometimes they'll move them into administration and they'll use them to drive to training for a couple of years, or they'll cycle them out and then we'll put them on Purple Wave and re-auction through that way, or we'll dedicate them to another department that may need it. I don't specifically know this one off the top of my head, but.
Here comes the chief.
You're asking about the 2011, is that what you're asking about? My assumption is Lieutenant Tompkins, or sorry, now Major Tompkins prepared that memo. Typically, a vehicle that age, we would cycle out of our agency, so most likely that's going to be cycled out. Oftentimes, we transfer older vehicles to different divisions within the city to get additional use, but my guess, it's being transferred out.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. I move to approve item D.
A second.
All in favor, or is this a roll call vote? No vote?
No.
No vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Special presentations, Economic Development Advisory Committee Annual Report. Marty Beasley, representing the Economic Development Advisory Committee, will present their annual report.
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening, Beasley.
I have my best assistant.
Can you get me to open today?
Very sophisticated.
Technology is so wonderful.
Highly technical.
Yes. You have to open the case.
I wanted you to see who was on the advisory committee with me. All of those folks, Marty Beasley, I'm currently serving as the chair, John Clark, Susan Cook, Joe Delasega, Jim Hoskins, Todd McKnight, and Jason Powinski. They all attend meetings, and we thank you for appointing us, and we work really hard at our job. The EDAC was established to act as a fiduciary citizen group to use sales tax money to the greatest long-term advantage for the City of Pittsburgh. The mechanics of it should be that the city staff, economic development director, or whomever has that responsibility, will source prospects, vet them as to viability, and present them to the EDAC if assistance is needed. The committee's job is to ask the hard questions, to see that the city has done their job, and then weigh the long-term benefits to the city against the risk/reward financial ratio. As far as guaranteeing loans, lending directly, or forgivable loans, is just an evolutionary process, and although there should be criteria and guidelines for the committee to follow, each opportunity should stand on its own. The committee's job is not to protect the tax money, and it's not to aggressively look for places to put the money. It is to prudently represent the citizens who provide the money and ensure that it is well-preserved and well-spent. Where's my guy? The role of the EDAC is to screen all applicants and all incentive requests and provide recommendations to the city commission. Incentives include property tax exemptions, can include property tax exemption, industrial revenue bonds, sales tax exemptions on construction materials, and property tax exemption. The revolving loan fund also is one of our main goals. The main goal is to expand Pittsburgh's economic base, and we do that with gap financing if the prospects need that. We also use those monies for infrastructure and utility work and building construction and repairs. Notable projects that fit into the economic development box that have happened in the last few recent years are Miller's Professional Imaging, their expansion, Penimani Physical Therapy, 2014, a new facility, Kendall Packaging, 2017, expansion, Eagle Pitcher Technologies' 2016, expansion, NPC 2017, expansion, La Quinta Inn and Suites, 2017, new facility, and Apex Stages, 2018, new facility. Those fit into a very neat box for economic development, but we also have other projects that don't fit in such a neatly structured box. But enhance the city's expertise, provide childcare, aid for our most vulnerable citizens, and also partner with major employers as they continue on a path of success that serves not only our city but our region. And those are listed here, the Family Resource Center, Retail Hotel feasibility study, as well as the Target Industry Analysis. That helps our city know where we need to move. When folks come into our community and ask, "Have you done the study?", we can say, "Yes, we have," and that helps us go in the right direction in moving our city along in what is needed. Also, the Plaster Center, which was one of our biggest projects that we have done to date, and Block 22, clearly outside the kind of eco-devo box, but all aids in economic development. The process for the RLF application, if you're coming for a loan, it's rigorous, and it's very transparent, and it's extremely personal. The applicant must give us three years in tax returns, both business and professional, a balance sheet, also both business and professional, and a business plan. These are the things that are listed, but we also can ask them and have the right to ask for additional information. And then a lengthy discussion ensues after we have heard from the applicant, and that is among the members. And that is among the members who are chosen for their business acumen, their expertise, and their personal integrity. And you, again, choose those of us who sit on that committee. The city commission then gets the information that we forward to you after our decision. And if you agree that it is a good decision, then you vote yes, and if not, you can send it back to us, or do, turn it down, I guess. The documents are then signed by the business, by the mayor and the business representatives. Now, the considerations for what we do are job creation, capital investment, and other. Other to me means, what does the project bring to the city that we don't have? Does it enhance our quality of life? Is it progressive and attractive to others who may want to move here? Is it economic development? Does it expand our tax base? Will it aid economic development? And mostly, is it sound? Has conventional financing been explored? One of the first things we ask when we have the prospect before us is, have you gone to the bank? Because it's never our intention to be a bank or to compete with the bank. And they, they always give us an answer, many times they have been to the bank, most of the time they have been to the bank. And we want that, we want that to happen before they come to us. Terms of repayment. This can include a loan repayment or involve a number of jobs, the jobs created, or capital investment expended by the prospect. Each incentive package is different, each request is different. So we need to be very flexible, and I believe that we, we always are. In the last year, the EDAC considered 12 official requests. And those requests are before you. We turned down four, three of those requests, and the reason was, the reasons were, it was not appropriate for all F funds, or it was an insufficient business plan, or the prospect came to us after they had completed their project and wanted to be reimbursed, which is not the way we do business. Pittsburgh is unique in having an economic development fund that tax dedicated to economic development. This is, that we can offer to our local businesses and entrepreneurs, as well as individuals and companies who are considering locating here. All of this is possible because a group of forward-thinking businessmen in the 1980s, Patrick, your grandfather was one of them, were progressive thinkers.
Not mine.
Yeah. Now, I think you're talking about, my brother's Patrick.
Well, I'm sorry.
That happens a lot.
It was Patrick and yours.
Yes, that's okay.
Were progressive thinkers, and in the 80s, Pittsburgh citizens are still supportive of that. And I think we can pat ourselves on the back and maybe look at our city logo and say, forward together. If you have questions, Blake and I will, we have one more? Oh, this is some questions we thought that you might ask this evening. The average length of a property tax abatement is nine years. Now, some of these are very big projects, and so that's the reason for the nine years of abatement. The average length of our loans is five years. And how much interest on, what's the average typically interest that we charge on these loans is five to six percent? Questions?
I, as a commissioner, want to thank all of the people that serve on this, because I know you all work hard and are very diligent about the decisions that you make and how you come about. And I think we're fortunate to have qualified people serving on this.
That's very helpful.
Thank you, and I think the feeling's mutual from us to the commission. But certainly, if you ever have questions, don't hesitate to ask. Next, I will be reporting on the Pittsburgh Land Bank.
Can we get a copy of all these two, an email?
Sure.
Thanks.
Sure you can. The members of the Pittsburgh Land Bank are Tom Spurgeon, Brian Jones, Brad Hanson, Jason Lorenz, who you just appointed a couple of weeks ago, I think, Kayla Spigarelli, Troy Graham, Dexter Neesler is an ex-officio member, and myself, and I'm, again, currently serving as chair. And we are aided, led, very, very expertly by Quentin Holmes, who is the Director of Community Development for the city, Britton Brenner, who's Assistant City Planner, and Deanna Gehring, who is Neighborhood Development Manager. And we also call upon Henry many times because we have questions among ourselves. This land bank started when Becky Gray was here, but then she left our community to find employment in another state. And so we were kind of in limbo. But Deanna and the housing staff got on the phone, and we asked other cities what they did about becoming a land bank. And we used some of their expertise, some of their advice, and now we're getting calls about our land bank. So we're feeling pretty good that we did a fairly good job. We had to write our own policy, basically, but it's, and it's been a lengthy process, and it's, we knew from the beginning that it would be a work in progress. So, we're pretty happy with what has happened.
Marty?
Sure.
Why don't you tell us what the land bank does?
I am, that's my next paragraph.
Excuse me. I thought you were stacking your papers up to lean.
And thank you very much. The Pittsburgh Land Bank is an independent agency in instrumentality of the city with the primary responsibility and authority to efficiently acquire, hold, manage, transform, and convey surplus city properties and other abandoned, tax-foreclosed, or otherwise underutilized or distressed properties in order to convey these properties into productive use and get them back on the tax rolls. Properties may be acquired by the land bank through the Crawford County's tax sales through a donation, foreclosure, internal city transfer, or purchase. We can either accept or deny, the Board of Trustees can either accept or deny the offers of acquisition. Some of the reasons are, does the property support the mission and the goals of the land bank? It could be part of a plan for reuse, rehabilitation, or redevelopment. It would allow for the creation or expansion of green or community space. It is a part of a plan for land assembly and development by either the land bank or partnering entities. The property is vacant, non-conforming, or underdeveloped, yet could be sold and conveyed to adjacent landowners. The property has title issues which have prevented development or redevelopment. Or the property could generate operating support for the land bank. Part of the process is to secure from the person that wants to buy the land and offer to purchase. Any person or entity interested in acquiring a property from the land bank must complete the offer to purchase form, available on the city of Pittsburgh's land bank webpage. Furthermore, they must be willing to enter into a development agreement. That's the second step. This agreement will outline the intended use of the property, the project costs, responsibilities of parties, the financial resources available for the project, a timeline for completion of the project, and a recapture clause. The development agreement will be negotiated and drafted prior to an employee bringing the offer before the Board of Trustees. Upon review of the agreement, the land bank Board of Trustees may include additional conditions based on location and the intended use of the property. Unused of all properties. Properties with adverse environmental conditions will not be accepted without a satisfactorily funded plan for mediation approved by the land bank. Also, properties with immediate maintenance requirements will not be accepted without a funding source for such maintenance. The disposition of properties will be based upon a combination of two different factors. The first factor involves the intended or planned use of the property is outlined in the development agreement. The second factor considers the nature and identity of the transferee, specifically considering the following. The applicant must not be delinquent on licenses or taxes in Crawford County. The applicant must be not, must not be habitually violating city codes or fair housing laws. The applicant must not have previously owned the property and incurred tax delinquencies. And the applicant must be able to provide a valid social security card and a photo identification. Just to let you know real quickly what we did in 2018 and as we go forward in 2019. The land bank sold 10 properties in 2018 for a total of $19,900. That included one existing commercial building, eight vacant lots for new housing, and sold to a neighboring property, the owner for some yard expansion. To date, in 2019, the land bank has sold eight properties for a total of $12,553. Two sold to the neighboring property owner for yard expansion, one new commercial development, one lot swap with the neighbor owner for an improved parcel stock, and three for new housing construction. The land bank acquired nine properties in 2018. To date, in 2019, the land bank has acquired five properties. As of 12/31/18, the land bank held 46 parcels in inventory. The land bank spent $37,415.37 last year. These funds were expended for various reasons, professional services, advertising expenses, contractual services, but the biggest expense was mowing. So that's why it's important for us to get people to take these parcels, because then that takes them off what the city has to pay for mowing. So, we also spent $3,700 on demolition and purchase of land, $4,499. And the land bank earned in 2018, $20,629.84 investment income was $730, and the sale of land, again, was $19,900. And our goal is to get these properties back on the tax rolls, cut cost in mowing fees, provide property for infill housing as well as new housing, and enhance the appearance of our city. And I'll get these to you.
Do we have any questions from the commission?
Thank you all very much.
Again, thank you for all the work that goes into this. I know it's time-consuming. Consider the following, Toast LLC loan request. Consider the recommendation of the Economic Development Advisory Committee to grant the request submitted by Roger and Heather Horton, owners of Toast LLC, for a loan from the revolving loan fund in the amount of $20,000 to be repaid over five years at 5.5% interest. Approve or disapprove?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. This is an exciting project that I'm happy to bring to you tonight involving Roger and Heather Horton, who really are no strangers to, to anyone who's been in Pittsburgh over the last 10 years or so. They've not only operated a successful business in Sweet Designs Cakery, they've been very engaged in just growing our downtown and moving our downtown and being involved in events like Art Walk and just encouraging more downtown investment. And they are here to do more of that tonight with the city's help. I'm going to ask Roger and Heather to come up and tell us just a little bit about what they are proposing to do inside Block 22, on the west side of Block 22, the former Crowell Space, and a role that the city can play in possibly making that happen. So, Heather?
Hello. I have a little word going to read. Hello, everyone, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak with you this evening. Can you hear me? My name is Heather Horton, and I co-own Sweet Designs Cakery along with my husband, Roger. We've been in the heart of Pittsburgh at our current location for over 10 years now. Our small business has grown from a one-woman operation to anywhere from seven to eight employees currently. But we have reached our max capacity at the cakery. In order to grow, we needed to think outside the box and explore our options. With the noticeable growth of the downtown district and Pittsburgh in general, we knew we had to stay in Pittsburgh. Our goal, as it has always been, is to bring something to the community that it needs. To us, that need is toast. We know what you're thinking. It's so much more than just bread and butter. A strong neighborhood deserves a place to come together, to celebrate successes, to nourish our bodies, and to spend time with friends, family, and colleagues. So many important moments in our community happen around the table. Not only will Toast provide a neighborhood hangout, it will provide jobs for cooks, servers, management, and even local farmers. We are estimating we will create up to 12 new jobs and possibly more. Our goal is to source as many ingredients as possible locally and to work with local organizations as we do currently, like PSU Career Services, the Work Study Program, Kansas Works, things like that. We do it for so long, and then you kind of, just becomes an everyday thing. After our first year in business, if not sooner, we will be begin, ah, we will begin implementing an internship program and collaborate with the Greenbridge Culinary Arts Program and Fort Scott Community College. I taught for a little while. I taught culinary through Fort Scott. I really enjoyed it, and I think the kids really enjoyed it. It gave them an outlet when they possibly didn't fit in anywhere else. So, I want to kind of bring that back in, but give them hands-on experience. We are in desperate need of hospitality workers and people with knowledge of how to, to run a restaurant and be in the food service industry. So, that's kind of an underlying theme that I kind of want to continue throughout the process of opening a new restaurant. When researching a way to grow our current business, we found ourselves right where we need to be, which is downtown Pittsburgh. We will continue to offer the same amazing customer service and baked goods at Sweet Designs Cakery while feeding the hearts, minds, and bellies of southeast Kansas. Heather will, that's me. Heather. I will run Toast and continue to check in with the cakery while Roger will manage Sweet Designs. A lot of people don't know Roger is there all the time. He's the baker. He does the financing, he's the maintenance, he does everything. So, you see my face, but he's behind the scenes doing way, way more, so.
Unpaid.
So, he will stay at the cakery. I'll check in, obviously, but we'll continue, you know, to put out the product that we do. We'll run our business as normal. The two businesses should act as really close sisters that get along well, hopefully. So, thank you for your consideration and giving us this opportunity.
Thank you.
So, a question for you.
Yes.
Do you have a parking plan for your business?
A parking plan?
Or did the city have a parking plan? The reason I ask that is, we want all businesses to be successful, and right now, with you coming in, there will be a parking problem. There is now since Ruth moved in, and we want them there. But there are two other restaurants that are supposed to open up, and I've had a lot of people talk to me with some concerns about parking. And if there's no parking close, they might go around the block a couple of times, there's no place to park, they just go somewhere else. So, that hurts all businesses. So, we as a city, and I don't know how you're involved, but we should involve all businesses with what their need for parking is. And for me, tonight, before we get too far down the road, I'd like to hear what our plans for parking is in that area, so all our businesses will be successful. So, I don't know, if you had a plan, if they've got a plan, or what's the plan?
I can speak to that a little bit. I mean, I walk back and forth from our business to Block 22 to a desk that I work at, and I, I have video during the busiest times of the day, and there's still parking spots. We're not to that point to have any issues. One thing that we want to focus on is getting people to ride bikes and walk and use the transportation bus that's provided. transportation bus that's provided. That's one thing we're working with Livwell, and that'll be a part of what we're working with them to do, to advocate for walking and biking and.
So we don't know if we've got, I mean, you said you have enough parking, but I don't know what.
I we haven't seen any decrease in business for the cake shop. I know, obviously, we will have more seats there at the restaurant, but it hasn't affected us yet.
But it could, and it could other businesses as more businesses move in, so that's my concern.
So Chuck I was saying you shouldn't bring businesses.
I didn't say that at all, Don. If you listen to me, we have a parking plan that we came up with that was a failure. And we said we revisit that plan at some point, and I just want to know if you've sat down with all concerned parties and met with them all and maybe had a plan for everyone's parking issues.
If there are no further questions about the agenda item, I'd like to call the questions, please.
Okay.
I move to approve. I second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Without a parking plan, I think we need one, and it seems like we don't want to talk about it, but that's my thoughts.
Move on to letter of agreement for professional services land use plan. Consider entering into a letter agreement for professional services in the amount of $64,090.20 with Olson, Inc., DBA, Borscher, Hare &amp; Hair, the Olson Studio, for the creation of a land use plan.
Mayor and commissioners, appreciate talking to this. As we all know, Pittsburgh has had seen a significant amount of investment and development all over the city. And what it what Pittsburgh has not doesn't have is a current land use plan. A land use plan can really help make a determination about where you should develop, what kind of development should happen in various areas of the town, and really try to start avoiding any potential conflicts in the development patterns and to kind of catch them before they before they happen. It's very common for cities to have land use plans, and we really think it's time that Pittsburgh should have one. We've we've talked about it for a number of years, and we went out for a request for proposals. We got five qualified firms that responded, and we interviewed three of those, what we considered the top three, and chose Olson and Ashner, Hare, and Hair, the urban planning arm, to as the as the proper or the appropriate vendor for this for this endeavor. They'll be analyzing our current conditions. They'll be kind of pulling together some of the planning work that's already been done in in different silos, things like our target industry analysis, IP 2030, those kind of plans. They'll be doing a market analysis of the retail, real estate markets, employments, employment market, things like that. They'll be organizing some community engagement activities and some online outreach so we can get some public feedback. We'll be they'll be giving us a finalizing a plan and an implementation matrix. And then we added as part of this a stormwater plan. We thought it was important to get a high-level view of an engineer's analysis of what these different development recommendations that they're making, what impact that will have on stormwater conditions for those different developments. So that's that's what we're is in front of you right now. I'm happy to answer any questions about it if you have.
What would be the timeline on when they would start giving us information?
We we will probably start this month, and it'll be about a six-month timeframe for that.
Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, I move for a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Agreement for consulting services, establishment of a community development corporation. Consider entering into an agreement for consulting services in the amount of $12,000 with Matt Burton for a comprehensive analysis and plan for establishing a community development corporation in Pittsburgh, Kansas. Yes, sir.
Again, back, a community development corporation is a common tool that a lot of communities have used. They've been around for a long time, and their purpose is really to 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 focus community resources so that you're able to do a development developments that you wouldn't otherwise be able to do. It's it's an actual tangible way that development can happen, right? It's a way that people, resources within the community can be invested and then turned into a development that is community-driven. Community CDCs are nonprofit entities. They're not it's not part of the city. It's going to be a separate entity on its own. They're essentially place-based. In other words, they're focused specifically on a specific area, in our case, would be focused on Pittsburgh, right? And it is of necessity, has community representation on its directing board, right? So those are the those are the kind of elements. There's about there's over 4,000 CDCs across the country right now, and I think if you would look at what most of them are focused on, most of them are focused on housing, right? But there are also CDCs that are focused on economic development, workforce development, social services, real estate, real estate developments, community organizing, things like that. Those are the CDCs have a wide range of community-based need that they're filling, and that's kind of the key for a CDC. A CDC is filling a need in your community where there need that where there's a there's a gap in in what the community can offer to to move forward on some initiatives. And what we're looking at with this what's in front of you right now is what it's going to take to set one up. What kind of CDC should we set up in Pittsburgh? What would it take to do that, right? In other words, the kind of what how much funding would we require, you know, the basics of setting one up and what it would look like? And then we're going to report that back and see, you know, what makes to see if you're interested in establishing one. We think there's a need. We've talked about having a CDC in Pittsburgh for some time, and we do we think that it's it's important that you can continue with the development that's happening in Pittsburgh as a tool that we can use to really move forward some development as we get more and more interested in what's going on here.
Jay, have you attested the water to the appetite of people to invest in this?
Well, in all honesty, Mayor, that is one of the reasons why we're doing it. There are people who have expressed interest in investing in in some projects that are going out around the town, around the town, but they, you know, they don't want to give money to the city, right? They want to give money to an organization that is focused on achieving what it is that they're interested in investing in. So in all honesty, it's more of it's as much a response to that, the community interest in investing in this, as it is in as it is in the service that it's going to provide us as a community.
In your experience other places, have you worked with these or through these? Or how have you seen it work?
In many in many cases, you know, CDCs obviously depend on the quality of the of the people who are running them and the boards that are managing them, okay? And so you'd have to be careful about creating the boards, and that's one of the things that we're going to be talking about as we explore this. What should the makeup of the board be? What will the bylaws and the rules that the CDC governs itself by? So it does matter. But my experience has been broadly positive. They have allowed the community, they've allowed the community to bring together what it can, both financial as well as leadership, and to focus to get projects accomplished that wouldn't otherwise get done.
I think this is a little bit of a confusing idea or premise to those of us who are not totally involved in this. But it sounds to me like it's almost a development company that individuals put money into to develop this or that. And our hour as a city involvement is only the forming of this. Is that is that the way I'm?
Our primary engagement at this point was that will be helping stand it up, right? But I think we will, in all likelihood, have a place on the board. It'd be very unlikely that you the community or the city government would not have a seat on the board, and we'd be engaged in it for a variety of economic development purposes. But but it's not a city organization, and it would be run as a separate entity.
And in theory, no further financial commitments?
In theory.
To the, I mean, to the CID. I mean, obviously, if there's investors and we're partnering in a project.
Well, that's one of the things we'll come back come back with. If it turns out that it needs any other kind of city resources, that would be something that we would we would present. That's part of the purpose of the of the of the contract that you're looking at right now, is to determine what is there enough community engagement that would it would stand up and run and function on its own.
Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, I move for a motion to approve.
So.
I second. Moved it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, sir. Non-agenda reports and requests.
Well, we just normally we'll have somebody under public input, ask us something that we're not prepared to discuss, so we'll hold it till the next commission meeting and discuss it under non-agenda. I realize there was something that came up today that we can also, I think we agreed to discuss, so we can either have me start by responding to Mrs. Brooks' comments from last meeting, which will roll into some of her comments in today, or we can just start with the other item that you had. It's up to you.
Why don't you start with you?
So Silverback, obviously, a major developer for the community. It's it's extremely unique. It hasn't happened for a long time, and obviously, with anything, there's a there's a lot of questions, and I want to just start by clarifying that, you know, the staff has been great. The staff doesn't do this all the time, so when they do, we spend a lot of time trying to get it right, and I think that Mrs. Brooks made a great point. You know, some of the information that she has actually used to validate some of her concerns have come from a very large Freedom of Information request that that her neighborhood paid for. I would hate to guess at how many documents were included in it, but I know it seemed exhaustive to pull it together, and it probably was just as bad for them to read it. But the fact that that's actually caused quite a little bit of concern is a pretty good reflection of how well things went. I think some of the confusion that Mrs. Brooks is referring to today, I'll try to clear up, has to do with the fact that we negotiate agreements with developers over a long period of time, and there's draft agreements, there's there's initial things that people put into applications when they have an idea of what they're going to do, and by the time that gets fully recognized, it is usually something different. So, you know, Mrs. Brooks stated that the city granted funds to P and L development from the revolving loan fund and the street sales tax, and that violated ordinance, the the street sales tax ordinance. During the last meeting, the city attorney explained that only action taken by the city commission was to approve the recommendation of the Economic Development Advisory Committee. That is what you committed to. Obviously, Mrs. Brooks brought up today that in that language, it said, in conjunction with revolving, uh, street sales tax funds, that was my preference. That's always been my preference for this project. I think I can make a pretty good argument of why it would be that or not, but that's not relevant. If you don't want to use that money, if you want to use the general fund, for example, that's why we have contingency, but I don't think that that's binding to anything after you were approving the spending of the actually approving the revolving loan fund recommendation from the EDAC. And if that's not correct, please tell me. The fact that I'd love to blame Tammy for the way all the ordinances are written, especially ones that aren't very popular or aren't worried very well, I would, but that's really on us, so I appreciate her hard work. But that's what you agreed to. With respect to funding the rest of that road, you know, that's up to you. And at the end of this, you can probably decide if you want to make a decision this evening, or if you want to make a decision later on, we actually spend those dollars. But that'll be a decision you will get to make, but I wanted to make that clear. Next, Mrs. Brooks referred to the the draft of Exhibit D.
Hey, Darren. Before we leave that point, so the options are to take your recommendation and say, go ahead and use city sales tax, or if we feel that that we're stretching the definition within that ordinance, you finding other sort other revenue streams within our current budget.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I understand, let's see, next, Mrs. Brooks referred to a draft of Exhibit D, which was presented at the last meeting of the development agreement for Silverback, which included concrete roads, concrete testing, concrete paving, concrete gerbs and gutters. It had no dollars assigned to it. It just had dollar signs. That is actually from July 12, 2017, which was nearly two years ago. That was a document that was included at that time. Obviously, if you'll recall, on September 28, 2018, in in recent history, you actually approved the development agreement passed by the commission, and it does not include any reference to concrete streets in the exhibit. You know, I always prefer concrete streets. That's my job as a city manager, I think, quite frankly, is to try to get the best product we can. Concrete over asphalt is a superior product. I know some people would like to argue that it's not, but the fact of the matter is, we have streets, we take care of them, we have experts, and concrete lasts longer and it takes less maintenance. So unfortunately, asphalt is usually cheaper, regardless of the gas prices. I'm aware that developers and contractors save money when they can. They prefer to use asphalt. I will always push for concrete, but I can't force them to build in concrete. The language, and yeah, in last week's, the second one I want to touch on is 5.1 in Article 5 under Financing Obligation that says financing of internal infrastructure improvements. All costs, the internal infrastructure improvements will be paid in cash by the developer. I believe it's 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 intending to say all reimbursable costs. I mean, there's no situation where the city would set up a district and and have hands off. If we want to if we want to go in there and put a neighborhood park in or something after the fact, we're not going to be limited by a state statute that says that we can't because all the costs are going to be reimbursed by the developer. All of the reimbursable costs per the development agreement will be reimbursed by the developer, and unfortunately, I can't take the blame for writing that language poorly or making it unclear, but that is the the nature of the beast. That's the language that's in there, and that's what is its intent is. We can absolutely go in and make improvements as we see fit in any neighborhood in this community, and we will if we need to. Finally, you know, negotiations are unique. They're usually extremely difficult, and they're ongoing. We I talked about this a little bit at the last meeting. The city has a pretty good record of negotiating in good faith. I think it'd be hard to find any developer or anybody that we've worked with that just said, that is absolutely the worst experience I've ever had, and I was lied to and cheated, and I feel like I really got screwed, and I don't want to go back to Pittsburgh. I think it's completely on the other side of the spectrum. I think we've got an unbelievable staff. We continue to add talent on top of other talent. We have continued to draw developers to our community, not just housing, but for retail and all sorts of things. I think it speaks volumes to the effort that they put out and the professionalism that they show, and I don't think it's I don't think it would be right if I just left it out there that there's some world of transparency that we've that we're not following, or there's some intent to mislead. This is a very difficult process. Most developers have a ton more money than we do. I'm not sure if anybody's aware of that. People aren't lined up to come to Pittsburgh, Kansas. I don't have 25 people a day saying, hey, I'd like to come build a $30 million housing development that you haven't had in 30 years. You know, so when they show up, we give them consideration. But I want to back up. This entire thing, this entire discussion of roads and what roads should be made of and where they should go, it all started because the city did what cities do. We went out, and we had an idea, and we had somebody approach us about a development, and so we went to the neighboring community and invited everybody in the community and said, hey, here's the concept. And it was overwhelming at that meeting that the neighbors in East Hills, our residents, our taxpayers, did not want all of the traffic of building 150 homes to come through their neighborhood, which has concrete streets, which would hold up pretty well, and and for a variety of reasons. And and they were listened to, and we negotiated within ourselves, we negotiated with the community, we negotiated with the city commission, and this this city commission, some of you are on here, agreed to spend $1.2 million of taxpayer money to build a road up from the south. So the developer agreed to build it from the south to the north instead of from the north to the south, and the And the, and the community, the taxpayers, their representatives, you, decided, "Let's spend the million-two and build a concrete road so this neighborhood does not have traffic in it." And it wasn't just about where and where on the streets. It was the noise, it was a lot of things. Everybody has expectations of, of a quiet, peaceful neighborhood, and we understood that and took it serious. So, now, move, fast forward, we've got a concrete road that we spent a million-two on, and we're dropping into a development that's bounded by another neighborhood that has concrete streets. And we're taking a bunch of heat for trying to make them concrete. I think, I think you've got to stand back and look at that for a second. There is going to be 120 houses at some point in the future built on those roads. A concrete road, according to Cameron, who I've got a lot of faith in, should last about 20 years. An asphalt road, in the best conditions, KDOT's telling us five is seven. That's if you're not building 50 houses and all the construction, everything that goes along with it on that road. Those roads are going to take a beating. So, the idea that we're spending $120,000 in the RID in addition to, which is 15% of the total of the roads that the developer is putting in, he's spending $750,000 on those roads. We're just saying, for another $121,000, it will save the taxpayers $800,000 over 20 years in resurfacing. Those are the decisions we made. I wish we could be more clear. I wish I could say it in less time. I appreciate everybody's work on this, and I do appreciate Cheryl's comments, and she has been dogged on this. And, and God bless her, she lives right there. This is a big deal to her. I, I mean, when I was a child, I had a field that I spent 10 years having the best time of my life in. And sure enough, somebody came in and built houses. And it was very frustrating. But there's only so much land, there's only so many opportunities, and it has to go somewhere. And so, we will keep trying to address these issues. I heard Mrs. Brooks say, "I'm going to keep coming to these meetings. That's what these meetings are for." And I hope when you hear us say that we are doing this above board, we are doing this in the best interest of the 20,000 people that live in this community, you will take me at, at our word. Because we are not perfect, but we are a heck of a lot better than we used to be. We are darn good. And I will give everybody on our staff an A for effort, because we are, we are negotiating as hard as we can on behalf of everybody. And, and I do want to acknowledge Cheryl for just putting up on this, I guess, because reading the stuff and looking for issues that we have is not, can't be fun, but, you know, she's from Pittsburgh, she cares about Pittsburgh, and she wants it to be a quality product like we all do, so.
Thank you.
With that, we can talk about fireworks, unless there's questions.
Anybody else?
Well, how do, how do we lead this? Are you looking for us to give you direction on street sales tax versus general fund?
Well, my plan, the reason, the only thing on the table at this point was revolving loan is because EDAC needed to weigh in on it.
Right.
I, I would be happy to wait until the road's built. We have $121,000 max that we've committed. But if you guys want, I mean, Jamie's putting the budget together. If you guys want to, if somebody wants to make a motion for general fund or the street sales tax tonight, that's appropriate as well.
Well, is it, is it appropriate? I mean, we don't make those decisions. We pay you two.
Well, I, I mean.
It seems to me like the time to do this is when we put the budget together, and we know where it's coming from. He knows, he knows what pot he can take it out of.
Yeah, my point is I don't think we need to be in a rush.
I'd like to make a comment. I, I, just a question. When, when is our street sales tax? We have two, right?
Yes.
And when, when's the first one up?
2022?
2021 or 2020, and then the other is 2022? And I'm not trying to sway how we're going to pay for this, but I have had a lot of people concerned. We need the street sales tax to be renewed, and they've told me that, you know, maybe we don't want to use that for Silverback to pay for the concrete, because people might be upset and not vote to renew the sales tax. And I don't want to do anything, I don't know about the rest of you, but I would hope that we don't put it in people's mind not to vote for the street sales tax, because we used it somewhere that they didn't think we should be using it. So, that's my comment on the use of street sales tax money.
Well, my, my comment on that is, I, I personally don't think that's where it ought to come out of. I think we ought to get the money someplace else. I think the street sales tax was basically made, I think it was sold under the premise that it was for repair. And I think that's, I think that's where it ought to stay.
I would agree with, with Patrick on that. And I don't know if now is the time to address that or wait till we do it in the budget, but.
Well, Jamie and Henry agree with you, so my recommendation is obviously not going to, I know it seems crazy, but not everything I want, I get at this. We do have a staff for good reason. So, I'd be happy to make a recommendation to you so you can make a motion if you want to just move on to general fund balance, or we can wait on. That's, I know you're looking for me to say something.
No, I, I'm just wondering why we need to vote on it.
I, I think we ought to wait till, till Jamie puts the budget together, and then we know where it's coming from.
Jamie?
But it sounds like we kind of have a, you know, three out of the five seem like it's not applicable to come out of the.
Now, those roads are going to go in.
Yes, yes, we want the roads in.
Before that budget.
Yeah.
So, that, that money is going to be spent from existing money. It's not going to be a budgeted item in 2020. Fund balance is fund balance.
I will.
Can you come to the mic? If you don't come to the mic, I don't really want to hear you at all.
When I revise the 2019 budget, I will build it not using the street sales tax.
Okay. How's that?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie.
Any other non-agenda?
I think we promised a discussion on fireworks.
Okay.
And the sellers patiently waited, so. You all want to come back up, or?
No.
Somebody want to start?
It's, we've heard their story.
Okay.
We've heard their story, and we've all gotten emails, I suppose. So, between us.
It is.
She had this list where Pittsburgh is the third highest business license among a particular group. I, I think it's kind of important to note that we haven't had any other concerted complaints about this issue. I think it's also important to note that this money gets spent to provide our citizens with the 4th of July fireworks display. All of that, all of those funds go to that. Is, am, am I not correct?
Last year, we had 25,000. We had five companies pay 5,000. The amount for the fireworks was 20,000. So, it's a, it's bumping right up against it. I wouldn't say it all goes there, but.
Okay.
The other thing I'd bring up is, you know, we, last year, we talked to 16 cities, serving, I don't know how they overlap. Actually, we were the most, 5,000 was the, was where we got the number from. We got it because it was the most common and in the middle. And I know a lot of it depends on what community you compare yourself with, but, you know, sometimes it's size and sometimes it's location. But being outside of Wichita can help you on one side of the argument. The other way of looking at it is, we're the big boy in southeast Kansas, and everybody's coming here, and we don't want the fee to drive business from our community. But I think we also owe it to the community. Like you said, if we can pay for a $20,000 fireworks show that anybody in the region can participate in, and we don't have to take that philanthropic money that can go to numerous other causes in town, then that's, that's, that, to me, it sounds like it's set at a pretty good rate. The other thing I'll point out is, Mrs. Sellers said, you know, last year, the 4th of July, we ended on a Wednesday. I don't think it was the most, and I don't know for sure, but it just sounded like you were saying that's probably not the greatest day for the 4th of July and the, and the seven options there are.
Weekdays are a little rough.
But maybe, maybe it was a bad year. It's just, I, I would hope we won't willy-nilly the fee up and down every year based on something other than this is amount. It should be tied to our fireworks show, and it should be tied to the level of service that we have in this city for fire stations, which is an ISO 2, which is the second highest you can have. And it's not without an investment from the taxpayers in that and to recoup that money. But that's about all, we, you know, that's all the staff has done, which is.
My concern is that it would drive small businesses like theirs out of business because they can't compete with the other ones that can afford to pay that fee. So, that's my concern. I've, I've had people from church groups contact me and said they'd like to be able to do some kind of fundraiser for their church, but they can't afford to pay $5,000. So, I, you know, I, I would like to see, and it doesn't sound like we're going to, I'd like to revisit that and maybe lower that fee a little bit to make it, maybe they'd be able to stay in business. But I don't know what your guys' thoughts on that is, but.
I mean, one of the reasons that I didn't, I guess, support any action last year was because I think the last couple of years, we haven't had nonprofits do. You know, it's a lot of work, and they're moving away from that. And so, it is businesses coming into our community for fireworks. It's not even Pittsburgh residents necessarily, so I don't, I don't think nonprofits are really.
So, it's going to, like you're saying, the big businesses will drive out the smaller ones.
Well, I don't think, I think the big businesses have replaced the nonprofits that no longer.
Can I address that, please?
Do what now?
Can I address that?
What?
With the nonprofits.
Oh, yeah.
Two of the businesses, two of the.
Doug, if you don't come to the mic, nobody at home.
I'm the only one that can hear you.
I apologize.
What are you trying to say?
Two of the businesses right across from Jakes, and I don't know, Benions or whatever it was, and the Boomers Tent are both, they're big business, but they're run by, that's run by the Church of Nazare, and that goes to their band camp. And the one down across from Jakes was run by a church group out of Baxter. So, it was.
And they both pay $5,000.
All the labor, all the labor was provided by the nonprofit organizations.
But it is.
And the, they reduced their percentage of pay because of the $5,000 fee.
So, it's a business that they use nonprofits for labor and give them a portion of?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Did not know that.
I, here's where I'm at on this, because I was at least perhaps a little too late sympathetic to this when it came up last year. But I would like to think about it, and I have a few questions that I'd like to ask the city staff and maybe come back next meeting.
Fine by me.
Maybe, you know, putting something on the agenda.
Absolutely.
Fine by me. Any other non-agenda reports, requests?
I don't think so.
Seeing none, I have a request. Does someone move for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to move right there.
Second.
I like that motion.
This move is seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? She's trying to say, she's, um, being your candidate.